We can't hear you.
Probably what you wanted.
Yeah.
Non pecuniary interest in all the planning.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
councillor John.
All the better.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Hiya Gerald, I've only just seen you. Councillor Tim.
I don't know whether I need to declare an interest, but I was involved with number four, the tree planting.
Yep. No, I don't think that, well, it's up to you to declare the interest, so if you think you do, that's fine. Is that everybody, Joe?
Um, yes.
Thank you. Item three, town clerks update.
Um, yes, chairman, I'm just, I'm just looking down at my, my, my iPad just one second. Yeah, first one, I have more than one, so I'll obviously start with Ebor Avenue, and it's just really to say what I think we already know, but I told everyone via email that the play equipment contractor said he's about four weeks, well, it'd be three weeks now, three and a half weeks away from installation at Ebor Avenue. So, um, that's good.
Very good, yeah.
Um, I've got a couple more things that have cropped up very recently, um, just in relation to Edenfield Cemetery to the roadway, I'm sure everyone is wondering what's going on, well, Keith Stubbs, the surveyor, has said that he will have the report and everything ready for the April meeting, so we'll have it for discussion at the April meeting. Um, that's number two. Number three update, um, I'm not really asking you to make a decision, but if you could give me any indication of your thoughts, we've been asked by Keith Whittle, if we would be supportive of bird boxes being put up in Elim Gardens on, in the trees. Um, I don't know what everyone thinks about that.
Okay.
Would the RSPB not do it?
I really don't know, I, I don't know how it's come about, but, um, that's what he's asked. Um, I think what we'll have to do with that is put it on the next agenda and we'll get a decision on that.
Do me a, I think Laura was sat around, didn't she Laura, sorry.
Yeah, I was just going to ask, you, you said he's asked, what do we feel about bird boxes going up there, but is, is he providing them, is, what's the information, is that the idea?
He's providing them, they are providing them.
Oh, that's okay then.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that's a good idea.
I would say, yeah, I would say we're good idea.
I have run it past Matt and Gary and they, they were in favour of it.
They were?
Yes.
Yeah.
Councillor, councillor June has her hand up, chairman.
Councillor June. I haven't got anybody across the top now, they're down my face. All right, go on.
Yeah, Men in Sheds have been making these bird boxes, and I think they've located 15 already down the trail, um, down the Trans Penon Trail, so I must, without knowing more details from Keith Whittle, I'm going to assume it's partly to do with that. They've, they've embarked on this very large scale, um, of introducing them throughout Hornsey, so I'm guessing this is part of it. They're, they're made by men in sheds, they're decorated by the public and, and fitted to the trees.
Okay.
I think, sorry, sorry Andrew.
Thank you. I can't, I can't see people with their hands up.
Councillor Julie and councillor Barbara have their hands up, chairman.
Councillor Julie.
Well, I can't see why it isn't something we wouldn't support, really, I mean, what would the objection be? We used to have owl boxes in there, but when, when the gardens were first restored, which will now be about 10 years ago, we had owl boxes in there then, so that we've obviously had a precedent of encouraging the birds in there, so, I mean, it'll obviously have to go on an agenda, but I, I can't see why on earth we wouldn't support it, really.
Yes, I certainly agree with you there. Councillor Barbara.
Yeah, I was going to say what Julie said, to be quite honest, the bird boxes on the trail look absolutely fantastic. I've been along there two or three times last week. Um, and I think it's something to do with the lions as well, I think there's, there's more to it. But I have to say that, that they're just sort of, they're outstanding, they're so well made, they're so colourful, they look great, and I think in Elim Gardens, they'd look fantastic again, so, as Julie says, we did have owl boxes in there, I think it's a good idea.
Okay, so it'll go on the agenda of the next Parks Committee.
Yeah. Okay.
Before the next town council.
Okay, and final item, um, you learn something new most weeks, um, and this is definitely something new to me, having been involved with, um, cemetery and burial management for 22 years, I've, I've never come across this one before, um, apparently, uh, and I've tested it with somewhere else, so it works and it's very quick, um, for interments for children, very terrible circumstances, um, deaths of children under 18 and stillborn babies, we can claim all our costs back, um, through the government for those interments, um, and that covers everything, the purchase of the plot, the actual interment. Um, so, you know, I, I'd like to think that that is something, my, my plan is that we will do that, because it's, it's at no loss to us, obviously, the, we, we get the full cost back and it means it becomes free of charge to the family. Um, and it's the same for the funeral directors as well, apparently, so the whole, the whole cost of, of all of it, um, can be claimed back. So, it's, you can't go any further back than six months. Um, sadly, we've had one premature baby interment in the last five weeks, so we could claim that one back. Um, but going forward, I, I would like to think that we will do that all the time.
Definitely.
Good idea.
Thank you. I, I wouldn't think that anybody would disagree with that, but if anybody has got any comments to make, I see.
No.
We could just take, we could just take it that that is an excellent thing to do, it will help the families at a time of sadness and distress, and not have them worry about the costs, and for us, it's, it's just doing good for the people of Hornsey. Are we okay with that?
Yes.
Was that the, was that the last one, Joe?
That's the last one, thank you, yes, yeah, thank you very much.
Item four, uh, Tim is going to speak on the tree planting project.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Much has happened since we voted to support this project. Initially, we wanted to buy the trees through the Woodland Trust, but their online shop was, was permanently closed, presumably due to the high demand from the BBC Countryfile programme. This is, they, these were the inspiration behind the venture. So we, so we ca, we contacted Alan Thera from the Civic Society, who'd undertaken similar, similar projects before. He was not only able to source the trees for us, but he also saw some civic society funds as well. This, these funds allowed us to buy many more trees than we originally anticipated. But not only that, we were able to buy differing sizes and also different varieties, so, which was excellent, really. We planted, and I just want to name a few, oaks, cherries, olders, rowans, beeches, so, and this is a great, a great selection of different trees. What we've done is we've created a future woodland walk in the lower pasture. We've also contributed towards combating climate change with this, and hopefully, well, definitely, we, we're going to encourage wildlife to, to, to prosper down in there. Planting took place over three sessions, and, and special thanks must go to Alan for his expert advice, it was brilliant, actually. Councillor June and an excellent team at HOG, they, they were, they put in a lot of hard work, and I have to mention, HIPS were also involved in that, and also my mate Rob, Rob Andrew. He also did, did some hard work as well, thank you. This project, uh, that will just get better and better as the years go, go by, uh, and will be a lasting legacy for this, this council, it's brilliant.
Yeah, absolutely fantastic.
So I, it just remains for me to, uh, take some photographs of the, the areas, uh, have a quick count up, and then I'll need to register it with the Plant Britain Initiative, uh, through, through, uh, the BBC Countryfile. So, thank you very much, it's been an excellent project.
Well, on behalf of us all, I'd like to thank Tim for the work, and, and all those of the people who he named, because
Yeah.
I, I think the figure was getting towards 400, wasn't it, Tim?
Yeah, I think, June, I think June may have had, had a count up, so, uh, yeah, I think we topped 400.
Which is absolutely fantastic, and with the hope that none of them will be destroyed, um, as they're growing up, you know, in another 20 years, um, we, we expect to see a marvellous forest there. So thank you very much.
We've got councillor Barbara, councillor Nikki and councillor June with their hands up, chairman.
Councillor, sorry, who was the first one?
Councillor Barbara.
Councillor Barbara.
Have I still got my hand up?
Yes.
I was just going to congratulate everybody and say how fantastic on, that they should do so much work, I mean, and, and all the groups working together, that must have been something else, really. It's so, so nice to see them all, the volunteers, doing such a lot of work, and I think they've achieved a great, a great addition to Holgarth Park.
Thank you. Councillor Nikki.
Um, yeah, I, I mean, I'd like to echo everything that everyone else has said. Um, but my question is, where exactly have you planted the trees?
Tim?
Well, a number, a number of different areas, but mainly in the lower pasture of the, of Holgarth Park.
Oh, yeah.
The particular, it's a particularly wet area, so, uh, we may also benefit from that. But not only that, we've done the, uh, around the skate park area.
Right, yeah.
There's been a few, few gone in there, and also, uh, towards the library, we've, we've planted a few up the hill. Have I missed any, councillor June?
I don't think so, I think you've covered it all.
Are you going to be getting any more trees? Do you think?
Well, that's all down to us, we, we're quite happy to plant some more, and I know Alan's quite keen, so, but we can only do it now, we've sort of finished now, uh, because they need to be planted before, uh, they start budding, I think.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine, I was just thinking of, I was just thinking of other possible sites, I mean, the park is a brilliant place, don't get me wrong, but I'm sure there might be other places in Hornsey that would benefit from having trees as well.
Yeah, Reverend Tina mentioned, uh, that they might want a few in St Nick's, uh, is it the, 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 the park at the back, or the grounds at the back?
Yeah.
I mean, have, have you,
We may do those next.
Have you thought about approaching the schools, because that would then involve the children, perhaps, and it, and at the moment, all you've done is got adults planting trees, which is wonderful, but, you know, our, our children are our future, and if you're not involving them, and, you know, for them to understand, because it's very tempting for, you know, a few idiots, once trees start growing, um, is to start trying to stick them up again, and I'm thinking maybe if, if you involve the kids, um, a bit more, then that might help to preserve the trees as well.
If I might come in though, Tim?
Councillor June.
Well, I mean, yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
We have a reserve of trees that are held at the, um, Hornsey Evan Garden's allotment on Hull Road. They were put to one side for, um, any failures that we might have. There is also planned planting to go in, an area of power road that's been, that's had the corner developed behind the Broadway apartments. Um, last year, I think it was last year, we did tree planting with the children in Hornsey County Primary School. Um, we did a row, I don't know how many, but that was done, so they haven't actually been excluded.
Oh no, I wasn't saying they had, but I was just making sure that they were included, that was all.
They've certainly been thought about, but the problem I think we had this year was it was late, because we were late getting the trees, and councillor Tim's absolutely right, they're now in bud.
Yeah.
The ones that have got to but the allotment, I've had to get them all into pots very, very quickly, and there was quite a few.
No, I, I know, I appreciate it.
So there are some there that we could use.
Yeah, good.
Because now, once they're,
We're a bit late, whatever we do, you see, we've, we've got a whole year to plan for anything else extra.
And hopefully with the wish.
Time. Was it stated that this was the best time, sort of February?
It has to be this time of year.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Can I just finish?
Thank you. Tim, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, I just wanted to assure Nikki that when we, when we started this project, we did actually contact the schools, uh, with the intention that they would help us plan, but obviously the Covid restrictions that we, we were, 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 uh, we weren't able to involve the schools this year.
Yeah, no, that's fair point, yeah.
Completely different thing, and we, 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 okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item five, Memorial Gardens, to consider a request to hold an Easter story trail. Joe.
Yes, chairman, everyone's had a copy of the request letter from, uh, Margaret, which outlines what, exactly what they would like to do.
Thank you. Um, any comments or proposals there?
Can I propose that it goes ahead? Uh, Margaret does a very, very good job, she organises people very well, and I believe we should give them that support of allowing the memorial garden.
Thank you.
Yeah, I second that, sorry, somebody got their hand up.
Okay, Nikki, I noticed your hands up.
Oh, sorry, I just forgot to put it down, sorry, I was too busy listening.
Laura.
I mean, I was just going to second it, that's all.
Okay, right, well, it's been proposed and seconded that we, uh, accept this proposal to allow the, uh, the, to, to put the Easter story trail in the memorial gardens. Those in favour of that, would you please show? I can't see the people on the next page, Joe, so.
Yeah, everyone has their hand up, chairman.
Thank you, that's agreed, and we wish them well with that project. Now the agenda items for the planning committee. Item one, 20 stroke 03394, change of use of land for the sighting of forty static caravans and construction of a pond, amended description at the Maples Attic Road, Hornsey. Yep, any comments or proposals to make?
Councillor Julie, councillor Stephen, councillor Angus and councillor June have their hands up, chairman.
Hey.
Angus, just a question.
Councillor Julie, yeah, sorry.
And, and just, just as a question, has this not already been determined, I think?
Oh yes, this was the one that I noticed.
Yeah.
It's been approved on the,
It's got a decision on the planning poll, Paul.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll, we'll take it off the agenda and not report on that.
Okay.
Item two, 21 stroke double zero 305, direction of two-storey extension to the rear at nine, sorely close Hornsey.
Councillor Stephen has a second.
Yeah, I'm in two minds on this one personally, um, the size of the extension isn't bad, what I don't like the look of is the elevations with the flat roof. I just don't think it's within keeping of the rest of the property or its neighbours.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
I, I agree with what councillor Stephen has said, Mr Mayor. Um, the, the size of the extension in relation to, to the property is not out of scale, but it is a huge box roof on the back, but have it, looking at the roof line of the property, I don't know how you could do it any different, because they have a very steep pitch on them. So I don't know how you could actually avoid the, the, the flat roof, but it, from the rear and the side elevation, I, I think it's not, not very aesthetically pleasing.
Okay. Does anybody else have any comments?
Councillor Angus and councillor June have their hands up, chairman.
Councillor Angus.
Personal basis, I don't like flat roofs. I think it's overdevelopment, but I am inclined to say approve if the neighbours haven't got any objections, and I'll put that forward as proposal.
Okay.
I would like to propose that it's actually, it's rejected, basically because I don't think it's in keeping with the area, as councillor, um, Stephen, as Prescott has pointed out, and as councillor Julia said, it's a box, solid close, it's a small place, I think it looks very much out of place down there, I think it needs to go back and raise some questions over whether or not that, that it can actually get a roof on there. Um, I'm sure it will be able to, but I would, it's wrong for that area.
Okay, thank you, June. Councillor Nikki.
Um, yeah, I, I, I can see where councillor June's coming from. My argument is it would, I mean, I, I'm not an expert, I'm not a builder, um, but is, would there be any way of making that extension more in keeping with, um, the rest of the area, that's, that's what I would want to know, that's what, we'd say reject it with a view to them investigating it being more, um, environmentally friendly, I can't think of a better word for it.
Visually appealing.
That's it, yes.
Right, so we've got two, we've got two, uh, different proposals. Um, does anyone second? It was Angus, wasn't it, who made the proposal? I've forgotten who made the, the, the initial proposal there.
Angus it was.
Sorry?
I think Stu.
Yes, I, yes, yes, councillor Eric.
I think it was Stephen.
Was it right?
No.
No, it wasn't Stephen.
No.
It was just Angus.
Angus, sorry.
Yes, I said it was Angus, yeah, so. Um, we've got two ways to go, so, a seconded for Angus then, please. Anybody? Is that nobody, Joe?
That's no one, chairman.
Okay.
But councillor Tim, councillor Tim was that seconding there?
Uh, I was just asking what the, what the other proposal was, what, what grounds the other proposal, we were going to turn it down on.
Yeah.
That was my proposal, and it is on the ground that it is not aesthetically pleasing, it isn't in keeping with the area, and I feel it should go back, um, to put investigation over whether or not the,
No, we, 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 we can't do that, we, we need to, we need to either propose support or objection.
But my proposal is to object.
Yeah, thank you, right, does anybody second that proposal, please?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Right, it's been proposed and seconded that we, uh, propose that we object to this going forward on the grounds stated. Those all in favour, please show. June. Who? June, I, you, thank you.
Sorry.
That's everybody, is it?
That's seven, chairman.
Seven. Those against that proposal, please show.
Two.
Two, that's carried, thank you. Item 21 stroke double oh four two zero, alterations and extensions including erection of a first floor extension to the front, construction of a glazed canopy to the front, erection of a single storey extension with attached canopy to the rear, following the demolition of a conservatory, erection of a first floor enclosed balcony to the side, and installations of new ground floor windows to the side at 37 Shaneigar, Hornsey.
May I just comment?
Yes.
And this is a flippant comment, they may as well just build a new house. So I'm only joking.
Yes. It is a rather larger,
It is.
A large erection, I'm sorry to have to mention. But, anybody got any comments on this one, please? Councillor June, I can only see June, yes.
Councillor Tim as well, chairman.
Yes. No, I, I mean, yeah.
Well, I've had a good look at it, and I think it's absolutely stunning, and I would propose that we go, that we accept this, that we, um, approve it.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Councillor Tim, was it?
Yeah, the, the, the only thing I would mention is that there is quite a large development, and, uh, the next door neighbours, uh, have not, not made a comment, so presumably they're, they're happy with it. So I'd be happy to support that, I think it's good.
So it's been proposed and seconded that we vote to support this application, those in favour, please show. Those against? That's approved, thank you. Item 21, zero, zero, six, one, one, erection of a single storey extension to the rear at Red Roofs, Strawberry Gardens, Hornsey.
Councillor Angus has his hand up, chairman, and councillor Jean.
Yes, councillor Angus.
We are neighbours, we have to declare a non pecuniary interest. We don't have any objection to the development, but we will not vote.
Thank you. Anybody else ever, does anyone wish to make a proposition?
I would move support, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Julie.
I would second that.
I'll second that.
Yes, thank you, councillor, seconded by councillor June. Those in favour of that approval, please show. Those against? That's carried, thank you. Item 21 stroke zero, zero, six, five, seven, erection of a sto, of a, excuse me, erection of a two-storey side extension with integral garage and dual pitch roof, oh, over, following the demolition of the garage at 17 Shaneigar, Hornsey.
Councillor Julie has a hand up, chairman.
Councillor Julie.
I would move support, Mr Mayor, I think it's a very sympathetic extension.
I would.
Thank you. Councillor June has seconded that, it's having been proposed and seconded, that we support this application, those in favour, please show. Thank you. Against? Abstention, no, that's carried. 21 stroke double oh six, double eight, conversion and associated alterations to existing redundant agricultural buildings to form three dwellings and one holiday accommodation unit at South, Southorp Farm, Southorp Road, Hornsey.
Councillor June has a hand up, chairman, and councillor Tim, councillor June and councillor Tim.
Councillor June.
Uh, yes, I've, I've had a really good look at this, and it's a considerable, um, project. According to the documentation, there are no objections to it, but there are concerns that have been raised by English Heritage, uh, Yorkshire Water, um, in relation to the sewerage, uh, I, I would, and I would propose that we approve this, subject to it meeting all the requirements of the experts.
I think, sorry, just from the chair, having read the, the document from Historic England, and I do think they were more concerned about the, um, the nature of the work to the side of the main development, and I think, I, I think that we would need, given that these riders may take their views quite, quite strongly, I would support that notion that the actual development in itself is, is good, but we, we need to be careful it not, um, interposing onto that land to the, to the side. Councillor Tim.
Uh, uh, thank you, Chair, I was just going to say that, that I'd be in favour of that, it's bringing redundant buildings back into use, which, uh, I think is always a good thing, rather than building new.
Okay, is that a, a seconding the proposal then, Tim?
Uh, I would second that, yes.
Yes, thank you. It's having been proposed and seconded, sorry, Tim.
Sorry, I was going to say that councillor Stephen had his hand up.
All right.
I didn't want to.
Right, well, get, get that in before I go to the vote then. Councillor Stephen, I didn't realise.
No, it's fine, um, I was just going to say, exactly, as what Tim and June have said, basically.
Okay. So it's having been proposed and seconded that we, um, vote to approve this development, all those in favour of that proposal, please show. My phone ringing. I do apologise for my phone ringing. Shut up, shut up. Right, it's gone to answerphone, right, uh, those, so that's the, uh, those against? Abstentions? That's carried. Item 21 stroke zero, zero, nine, two, two, a lengthy description about tree felling. Um, have we got a report from the tree officer yet?
No, chairman.
So the proposal is to presume that we defer that. Is that okay to everybody?
Hmm, I can make a comment.
Yes, councillor Angus.
And I know this garden very well. And it's, it's so sad, I think the house was built after the trees were planted, and we have to leave it to the tree officer, but it's such a shame that some wonderful trees in the past have been trashed, and there's going to be some more spoilt, but it's all. and there's going to be some more spoilt, but it's up to the tree officer as far as I'm concerned.
Yes, thank you for that, yeah.
Councillor June has her hand up.
Councillor June.
As everybody knows, we've been on some considerable planning courses these last week or so. With Cheryl and Laura, it's councillor Cheryl and councillor Cheryl and Laura also. And one of the things that was mentioned was that for every time a tree comes down, another one should be planted.
Yes.
How do we know that that gets done?
The tree officer enforces that, that's always been the case.
Right, that's absolutely given that that will happen.
Okay, so. Item twenty-one stroke zero zero seven two one. Erection of a scooter shelter at Gregson Court Cliff Road, Hornsey. Councillor June, and then Julie. Councillor June, sorry, yeah councillor Junior.
Yeah, this is, there's a question for councillor Whittle here. Is this Gregson Court, is this the area where there was a complaint from one of the residents?
Councillor John?
It's, the two applications, there'll be another one coming in for that particular area, we'll certainly. This particular application is over the road from the, in front of the road Convent and so on. And I can point out that neither of the applications. Both the applications to that respect. I don't want to comment any further because of this.
Councillor June then. Oh, I've gone, I've lost you. Councillor Julie.
Well, I was just going to move support, Mr Mayor. And I know from going into various properties with my work that housing scooters is a bit, becoming a bit of a problem and they can cause hazards when they're left, if it's flats etcetera in the communal areas. So I would, I would move support on this one.
Thank you. Councillor Tim?
I would second Julie's proposal.
Right, thank you. It's been proposed and seconded that we approve this proposal. Those in favour, please show. Thank you. But that's, that's approved, thank you. And that's a clump for the ending of that meeting. Shuffling of papers everywhere. We've come to the meeting of the full town council. Apologies for absence.
No apologies, chairman.
Thank you. The mayor's announcements, I'm very pleased for the first time in my mayoral year to approve that I was chained up this morning along with councillor Tim who wasn't chained up, but to have our photographs taken in front of the new Brazier and Civic sign outside the new leisure centre, the hub. It was beautiful sunny weather, the Gazette and the community news sent photographers and we had our photographs taken and made some wonderful comments about how nice it was and marvellous. I did make the additional comment to the Gazette that I would, because my picture was in the paper, I would like to indicate that I am waiting to have my beard trimmed and I can't do that until the twelfth of April, so I said that I would, I am looking forward to having my beard trimmed and she said she'd put that in the story. So that's my only announcement, it was very good, the new sign is excellent. They're a bit larger than the old, it's, it's larger than the last one and it looks fantastic, so thanks to all involved in doing that.
Councillor Nikki has a hand up, chairman.
Councillor Nikki.
Yeah, signs are all well and good, but the proof of the pudding is in the eating. When I went to the gym, I wasn't allowed to go in there because they wouldn't, they weren't allowed to have human contact, even though I had a mask on and was socially distanced and everything else. And they wouldn't let me bring my son in either and I had quite a battle to explain to them what my needs were. Even though at Drifield, they actually don't have that problem at all when I was going to Drifield while we were waiting for this hub to be opened, that, you know, no one mattered in Ireland, but because of these Covid restrictions, they decided that they can't touch anybody. So I'm, I'm very pleased to see that the thing is open, but as I say, I'm, I'm waiting to see it actually being used properly and being accessible to everybody, because if it isn't, I should be doing something about it.
Okay, thank you. That's the end of my announcement, so item three, the minutes. Minutes one, to receive and sign as a true record the minutes of a meeting of the planning parks and semi-strategy held on Monday the twenty-second of February.
Move it, Mr Mayor.
Barbara's moved it.
I'll second that.
Tim has seconded that. Those in favour, please show. Jo? Is that everybody? Thank you.
It is.
Thank you. Carried. Minutes two, to receive and sign as a true record the minutes of a meeting of Hornsey Town Council held on Monday the twenty-second of February twenty-twenty-one.
Move it, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Barbara's moved it.
Second them.
Councillor Julie.
I'll second them.
Seconded, yes, thank you. Those in favour, please show. Thank you. That's everybody, is it? Jo, Jo? Thank you. Number four, decorations of interest, the same as before, but I will repeat them. To record declarations of interest by any member of the council in respect of the agenda items below. Members declaring interest should identify the agenda item and type of interest being declared in accordance with the Localism Act twenty-eleven and the relevant authorities disposable for junior interest regulations twenty-twelve. Councillor Barbara.
Harp and planning.
Thank you. Councillor John?
Harp and planning.
Councillor Tim?
Harp and let's go.
Thank you. Councillor Laura? Councillor, oh, Laura's taken a hand down. Is that everybody who's?
Councillor Angus has his hand up, chairman.
Yes, councillor Angus.
Item nine, I'm the founder trustee of the youth club. Non pecuniary interest and I will vote.
And I would declare the same. Thank you.
And myself.
And Stephen?
Number nine as well.
Yeah. Thank you. Two, to note any dispensations given to a member of the council in respect of the agenda items, well that doesn't apply in this particular case. Item five, town clerk's update.
No updates, chairman.
Thank you. We're adding an additional item, a new item six here to the agenda because Jo was in for, oh.
Well, I was, but they're not here, they're not on, they're not on screen, so.
Okay, so I was going to announce that the police has said they would be in attendance, but, and so bring them in here, but in, in, in that case, it doesn't need to be said, but I've said it, anyway, you know what I mean. Item six, liquor, liquor, litter picking station. Julie, councillor Julie?
Maybe liquor might be more appropriate given it's me. Thank you, Mr Mayor. My sister is a very active Beverley Wumble and so I have a great insight into how that system in Beverley works, which is essentially that people who are interested in litter picking just on a casual basis, not as part of a an organised day or anything like that, can go to the refill shop, which is down off Toll Gavel and get a key for a box which is outside, which has in it all the necessary equipment for litter picking, the pickers, the hoops for the who want, pick up litter on their general sort of walk or dog walking or whatever. And the Wumbles have an arrangement with East Riding Council that bags of litter can be left next to the ordinary council bins, they have some stickers to put on them and the bags are left at the side of the bins and the East Riding collect them and take them away from wherever they are within the Beverley area. It's something that works really, really well, you'll see a lot of success with the scheme. And I wondered if it was something that we maybe ought to think about, I'm not putting any proposal to the council tonight. I just thought it might be something we could think about, about having a litter picking station in the town centre where people who just want, when they're out, you know, in the park or visiting for the day, can just go get the equipment and then take it back. I know that one of the problems is people not returning the equipment. This isn't an issue for the Beverley Wumbles because they have a benefactor who pays for the equipment. So they actually encourage some people if they want to litter pick on a regular basis to take the picker home and keep it at home because people are more inclined to just take it with them when they go for a walk if they don't have to go to the town centre to get it and then take it back. Their litter pickers, they don't cost a lot, they're a pound each from pound stretcher and whenever they run out, this person in Beverley gives them the necessary money to replace it. Obviously, we would have to think about funding it, we'd have to think about a location for it. But I just wanted to put it out there for everybody to have a think about. We obviously have groups in Hornsey which do a fantastic job collecting litter. I was just thinking that maybe we could tap into people who weren't necessarily part of those groups or visiting the town or something like that, that could go to somewhere, I think possibly around the town hall or even in the town hall and just borrow the equipment, fill the bag with rubbish or not as the case may be, because having gone with the said Beverley Wumble round our park, she was almost disappointed that there wasn't litter to pick up. Because we are very litter free in the town centre apparently compared to Beverley. So I just wanted to put that out there for everybody to have a think about, maybe we could have it on another agenda when there's been some thoughts about it, but I just think it would be a good idea for Hornsey to, to tap into the fact that people are outside more and more aware of the surroundings.
Okay, well, rather than have, rather than have discussion now, as Julie suggests, we put it on the agenda for the next town council meeting. And if everybody, there are various pros and cons of this system, of course, where you would put it and, you know, it, it might be that the seafront area is an area that perhaps is, well, I don't know. I personally think that that might be a worse area, you know, for a litter and with division chip papers and all that kind of stuff, so, okay.
I would concur with that.
Yeah, thank you, Eric. Item seven, town hall reopenings stroke council meetings. Jo?
Yeah, thank you, chairman. Everything being equal, public buildings are due to open on the twelfth of April, so I can't think of any reason why our town hall shouldn't reopen and we should all go back to our, I won't say normal way, because obviously it won't be, but in essence, the building, I can't see, think of any reason why the building shouldn't open on the twelfth of April and will return to the office in some form or other. So we, we'd like to do that unless, as I say, something changes. Obviously, there's, there are things to be decided yet, but I'm just interested to know what members feel about a return to face-to-face meetings. If the legis, well, if the legislation is renewed that allows us to hold remote meetings, then we will have to return to face-to-face. I'm not sure at this point whether that legislation will be renewed or reviewed. But, you know, we'd like to return to the office on the twelfth of April and I'm happy to return to face-to-face meetings if and when that, that legislation is withdrawn.
Councillor Laura?
I was just going to say that I would be quite happy to go back to face-to-face meetings if the legislation is and I was going to ask, will we be in the large room upstairs presumably so that we can socially distance?
Yeah, I think we'll continue for the foreseeable in, on the first floor room.
Stephen, sorry, Jo. Councillor Stephen?
I was just going to say, same as Laura, yes, I'd be happy to go back to face-to-face meetings. And regarding opening the town hall on the twelfth, if you're happy with that, Jo, you've managed it very well in the past, last year. And yeah, I'm for that as well.
Thank you.
Councillor Julie, councillor Julie and councillor Angus have their hands up, chairman.
Councillor Julie.
Well, I was just going to say the same as Laura and Stephen have said. I think Jo has steered us through all of the necessary precautions and legislation and we should go back to opening the town hall and meetings, assuming that everything stays on track. I'll propose it in fact, you know.
Yes, sorry, who else was it? Barbara?
Councillor Angus and councillor Barbara, chairman.
Councillor Angus then.
Please.
Yeah, yes, thank you. A short and succinct comment, I do appreciate that, councillor Angus. Councillor Barbara, please be equally succinct.
I will, I definitely will. County Hall will open on the twelfth of April, provided that's what the government will allow. And they will be holding their first cabinet meeting on the twentieth of April. Hopefully again, face-to-face, but it will depend upon what the government say.
Yeah. I think, I think in all this and looking ahead to the month after when it's may making, we discussed it this, this morning at a meeting with Jo, Tim and I, and it's clearly, we can't make any decisions yet. Some of the decisions may have to be made at short notice to arrange for may making etcetera and with a view to fourteen council members plus a clerk is fifteen and if any of the regulations stipulate fifteen at any of these events, it does mean that nobody else could be there. But we'll, we'll have a look at this and we'll leave it to Jo to, to, to do what is allowable near the time. Is that okay to everybody? Thank you. Item eight, accounts deferred from February meeting, the issue of British Gas, PHS and Yorkshire Water. The clerks, if they could comment?
Thank you, chairman. I'll start with the PHS one because that's probably the easiest one. I think I did say at the last meeting that once we get back into the building and PHS, for those who don't know, who have forgotten, PHS do all our sanitary provision, air fresheners, things like that in, in all our toilets. Once we get back into the building, we will notify them that we are back and then they will return to their normal duties and they will issue a credit note for us going back to November, because we did tell them that we were out of the building from November. So that will hopefully sort itself out once we get back on the twelfth of April.
Thank you.
As far as the Yorkshire Water one goes, this is to do with the marketplace toilets and the increase in the water bill. Which, I've gone back a couple of years on water bills at Marketplace toilets and yeah, there's no doubt about it that the water bills have increased. I think I said last time that Gary had found out that we had two metres there and we were a little bit worried that why we had two metres and what, what was going on, so we switched the water supply off for a twenty-four hour period and both metres stopped and were read exactly the same the following day. So obviously the two metres are both related to the toilets and there's no, there are no leaks because there was no, the, the, the readings had stood still for the twenty-four hours. So the only thing that we can think that has changed in more recent times is the fact that we have, the toilets at Marketplace, they flush themselves. They're on a timer and they flush through every so often on a timer. This, this hasn't always been the case, but Gary tells me that when it wasn't the case, they had major problems and they were, kept blocking up with like lime scale and it was a real problem and since we've had this flush through, that hasn't happened and it's all been okay, so obviously that's worked. What we have done is reduced the frequency of the flush through and we're going to see how that goes. But we are confident that there are no leaks and the water metres are both linked to the toilets and there's, there's no issue with them. So we've turned the flush down slightly, so we'll, we'll keep an eye on that and we'll report back on that one.
Just as a general question, Jo. If you think of it before the flusher device was on.
Yeah.
Presumably, dealing with the issues when they blocked was an issue that either had time or expense.
Yeah, it was. It definitely was. Um, it it was a constant battle with with them. And also, not only what did we have sort of lime scaling up, the the they smelled terribly, really badly. Um, so this this flush through gets rid of all of that and they are so much better. But obviously, the flip side to that is we are using more water.
Okay.
Um, so but we, the flush frequency and we'll see where we are from the next couple of bills. So we've done that already.
Yeah, thank you. And the British Gas.
One, the gas bills. Um, so we went back to 2018. Um, and the gas bills were the same in 2018 and 2019 as they are today on most months. If you, from Christmas time, um, the gas has been more or less off. I'll come back to that point in a minute. But and if you notice on the schedule of payments for this month, the gas bill is 300 and something pounds, where normally it's 500 and something pounds. So that has reduced in the last, the last month or so. Um, I, from that perspective, I've got no reason, and because the bills back in 2018, 2019 were as much as they are today. I've got no reason to think there is any issue there. However, when we go back to the building, our um boilers, et cetera, are due a service. And that is booked in for when we get back into the building. And when they come along, they are going to check the system out and have a look at it and just make sure there are no issues that might be causing an increase in in usage i- in any way. Our, and I'm sure there are people on this screen tonight who may be able to tell us more, but um not just to me, but to Gary. Our central heating system in the town hall is a constant mystery. Um, even when it's all been switched off, the office where um the assistant, the deputy clerk and the secretary sit, it's still sauna-like. And Gary has absolutely no idea why. Um, councillor Tim and councillor Andrew and I discussed this this afternoon and councillor Tim made a very good point in that he, it's a possibility that even when the whole system is switched down, switched, turned down or turned off, um, something still keeps running over, um, just to make sure that it's still working. Councillor Tim, you might want to add something to that because I'm not very technical with that. So it could be for that reason, but the fact remains that um Gary has not really much of an idea how that system works. And I'm getting this third hand, but Nikki was speaking to the the guy who fitted the system. And he said it's a very complicated system and he wouldn't now be able to recall most of it. And I really do think we need someone to come in and tell us, particularly Gary, not so much me, but tell us um what goes on with this system, why this office is staying really hot. And and just to give us an idea of what's going on, so we we're a bit more informed. But as far as the bills go, the smart meter that it's fitted with sends, sends a reading directly into British Gas and all the bills are based on that smart meter reading. And looking back over the last couple of years, I've got no reason to think that anything much has changed.
Councillor Barbara.
Well, I'm a little bit surprised because, to be quite honest, I looked at these bills and I was quite appalled. You cannot tell me that, or tell any of us surely, that this kind of money of 585 pound and then again, 360 pound. It, there's something wrong. And the point is, if there's something wrong and we pay British Gas, does British Gas not come in and maintain it?
We have a maintenance contract with the, for the boiler with them, yeah. Uh, yeah, we do.
Well, they maintain mine, they maintain yours, don't they? So therefore, there's something wrong. This is a ridiculous amount of money and if it was in your own home, you wouldn't pay it. So this needs sorting and it's the same as the flush in the toilets. You'd need a proper plumber to come in and have a look, Joe, at it and just say, it's all very well saying that it actually, it it doesn't work unless you have all these flushes. There's no way that all the other toilets that are public toilets can have flushing going on all that and coming in at 268 pounds. That's an enormous amount of money for water. I mean, we can't do it. I mean, we had to get onto the electric about the memorial garden. I think we need a proper plumber in and we need British Gas to come in and tell us what's wrong because there's something wrong with this. Irrespective of one room, there's no one room. My house is like a sauna and I don't have gas fills like that. And surely, we've been closed. We've been closed at the town hall. Nobody's been in it. So why would the gas bill still be the same?
Joe, have you got a comment?
Only to say that, as I say, British Gas are coming. As soon as we we get back into the building, they are coming and we, I've already just when we booked the appointment, I can't remember exactly the date of it, but it's, it's very soon after we get back into the building. Um, they are coming.
Was it last nineteen then?
Oh, it it's annually, we have a service contract with British Gas.
So when is the ultimate in saying it?
The coming, when we get back into the office.
And did they say the last one, then a year ago, that there's been nothing wrong?
There wasn't, well, they didn't report any problems to us last time.
But we were still paying the bills, so they wouldn't need to know about them, would they? That's the point. They think it's fine.
Yeah, uh, they didn't report any problems with the system that would make the bills, that would increase the bills. That, that's, I think that's what I'm trying to say. But they are aware that we want them to check the system when they come, when we get back into the building.
The difference is, the place has been closed. I mean, this is how a lot of councils have made money, which they're going to have to spend anyway in the future, but they still have to say, the place has been closed. It's not been used. We've not had people going in. None of us have been going in. You haven't been going in. So why would it be this kind of money?
I don't know. I can't answer that question. We'll, we'll see what they say when they come.
Councillor, Councillor Julie.
Well, councillor Tim had his hand up first, Mr.
Sorry, I didn't realise. Councillor Tim, yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to add to, to what the clerk had said. Uh, if, if, I I spoke to to Lewis Stephson, uh, and he's a plumber. And basically, if the, if the boilers left on, the, the, the system has to push the water through. It's generally one radiator. You can, you can obviously turn the radiator off so it just runs through the pipes. So there's no high heat going through the radiator, but it does need to continually move water around. So that, that might be the issue, but uh it seems a lot of money to be spending on uh just moving a bit of water through the first, the first section of pipe. And the, the other thing is, what concerns me, and I, I've had this before, uh, that when we've got a British, British Gas contract to service, they're servicing the boiler rather than the system. They didn't install the system. So they're very likely, unlikely to, to comment on the rest of the system. So it might be the, the system other than the boiler that might be at fault there.
I think, I think we're hoping that they can give us some sort of explanation on how, because we've got two boilers. For anyone who doesn't know, there are two boilers there. Um, and we're not sure what, how it works. And we're hoping that they can say, well, look, this is, this is what this does. This is how this works and this is what happens. But I don't know. They might not.
Well, perhaps wait.
Sorry, sorry, Andy.
Sorry. Councillor Julie.
Yeah, well, it seems to me that maybe British Gas aren't the people for this problem. Um, obviously, they're the supplier and they service the boiler, but we have a, a commercial underfloor heating system. We don't have radiators, do we?
No.
And the principle of that is that it heats the concrete. I mean, there's 18 inches of concrete between the two floors. It heats the concrete and it's a constant warmth. And it's reputed to be the most cost-effective heating you can have. So if we're getting big bills, there's something wrong with the way the system is balanced. Same as, it'll have manifolds for each rooms. So it's like turning a radiator on and off in a room. And it, the manifolds aren't set right. If the little office is boiling and the rest of the place is at an ambient temperature, the manifold for that room needs adjusting. But British Gas won't do all of that because it's not a domestic system. It's a commercial underfloor heating system. So if Nikki is in touch with whoever fitted it, maybe they could come and rebalance the system and show Gary how it works. Somebody that is an expert in that sort of, it won't be a domestic plumber that will know how all that works. Get somebody in to make sure that the system is being used correctly, because if it's expensive, it's not being used correctly. There's some problem with the system. And I don't think British Gas is going to be the body to explain that to us.
Okay.
Councillor June has her hand up, chairman.
Yes, councillor John.
June, sorry. Oh, I'm councillor John.
I can see John.
Sorry.
Yes, Chair, the risk of being slightly flippant, uh, I would suggest that we perhaps contact the previous town clerk, Colin O'Connor. I see you may have some interesting observations on our heating system, yeah, for all the stuff that was first put in.
Thank you. Councillor June. Councillor June.
Yeah, I was just to concur with um councillor Julie. Um, you, you've got two systems, you've got two boilers, the underfloor heating, you need an expert in that. There's no way British Gas Service Engineer is going to tell you how that system works and what you need to do to control it. And my guess is that room thermostats or whatever it is that's controlling the heat individually in each area would probably need looking at. I mean, when was the last time it was looked at? When was the last time it was, the system was overhauled?
Joe.
I, I don't know. I don't know.
Councillor Ju- Julie.
Yeah, if I could come back on this, I think a Colin that could help us, it might not be Colin O'Connor, but Colin Embelton. Because Colin designed the town hall and did the specification for everything in it. And I would suspect that Colin might be able to, Embelton, might be able to point us in the direction of somebody who could help us with it. He's certainly got more knowledge of the, what's in there than any of us.
Would you like me, would you like me to have a word with him and ask him to liaise with Joe? You think you could? It might be a bit hard for me to get hold of him, but I'll try.
This mo, this afternoon, when we discussed this, the point crossed my mind that when the plan was drawn up, the architect may well have sought expert advice from, for example, a heating firm.
It would be the heating engineer.
A heating engineer that he took advice for to then put into his plan. But between these different people, we should be able to get to the bottom of this.
I'll, I'll ask him to have a word with Joe, you know, to get in touch with Joe and then see where they can go from there.
Thank you very much. So, oh, Tim, were you still commenting? Yep.
Yeah, just, just quickly, I, I didn't realise my hand was up, but uh, uh, you can get inline water filters now for, 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 say, the toilets, which will prevent buildup of calcium or lime scale in the, in the, in the, in the urinals or wherever it is that you which, which, they're not expensive and a plumber could fit those fairly quickly, I think, which would perhaps help the matter.
Yeah, thank you. Oh, oh, Barbara.
Yes, I just wanted to say, I hope people don't think I've been a nuisance to bring these uh amounts to your notice. Because at the end of the day, even looking at the um PHS saying that we will get credit notes, if we hadn't picked up on it, we wouldn't have got them. So all I'm saying is I did it because I thought I was trying to save money for the residents, so I hope you don't mind.
We certainly realised that that was your motive, the.
Thanks. That's very kind of you.
Item nine, Hauntsey Youth Club expressive media exhibition in the town hall.
Yes, chairman.
Clerk, yeah.
Thank you. Yes, chairman. Obviously, the youth club, like everyone else, has been unable to meet um in, in recent times. Um, and the, the two leaders would like to um get in touch with, with all the, the, the youth that normally come. And what they would like to ask them to do is to, for them to express in photographs and or a short video their thoughts and feelings about lockdown and what they've gone through and various things. Um, and they would like to, as, as soon as we can, they would like to display some of this information, some of these details and photographs in the town hall, if possible, at some point when it's safe to do so and, and everything else. And then after all of that, they will transfer it all back to the youth club and they'll display it themselves back in the youth club. Um, but they would like to, um, to do that in the town hall once they've collated everything together.
Thank you. Well, I, I from the chair would say that I'm, I'm sure we'd all be very interested to see the views of young people, to see how it's affected them. And I, I'm sure the rest of the town would be willing, would be wanting to join in that appreciation. So, but councillor John.
Yes, Chair, sorry about that. It's my steam-driven laptop and I tried to keep it going and it's failing on me. Uh, yeah, it pushes reflexes upon lockdown. It would certainly guide the youth lad into our town society to get information in from outside. So perhaps the youth club would care to, um, either take that as an exhibition, we'll send details of it to the youth lad as well on the website for mental that last meeting.
Yes, thank you. Is, is there a general approval for this?
Absolutely. Yes, yes, move it. It's a wonderful idea.
Okay, councillor Barbara's formally moved it.
Second it.
Councillor Laura has seconded it, having been proposed and seconded, those in favour of supporting this. And I shall put my hand up for the first time this evening. So that's a unanimous, is it? Yeah, thank you. Item 10, creation of a personnel committee to receive a recommendation from the staff working group. Clerk.
Yes, chairman. Um, the staffing working group met and discussed at length, um, the possibility of a personnel um committee, um, based on a model that Eirnlicker, um, East Rind and North Links Local Council Association, of which we are a member, um, had produced. And their recommendation to this meeting tonight is that the town council do set up a personnel committee. Um, what the model um suggests is that um the personnel committee itself has five members um who work autonomously. Um, and there is then a appeals committee, should that ever be necessary. Um, I think the staffing working group when it met said five, but the Eirnlicker model just suggests three people, uh, three members for the appeals committee. Um, if the town council would like to go ahead with this, the, this committee and the appeals committee will be formed at the annual general meeting. Um, and it will be elected there and the full, um, that the, the operation of that will be sent to all members so that you can see exactly how it's going to work. Um, but in essence, the working group would like to recommend the setting up of a personnel committee with an appeals committee.
Yeah, thank you. Is, is that in a sense just for information? We don't need to vote on it?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We do need to. Right, just a minute. Yeah, Laura.
I would just like to propose it. It's one of the things I think is quite important that we have because with the way personnel is going these days, with the legislation and everything else, I think we need to have something like this in place so that we can deal with any issues in a sensible manner, that's all. And so I'd like to propose that.
And, and to put it into writing what we've been doing anyway, probably.
I'd like to second that.
Right, okay, proposed and seconded.
I, I had my hand up before.
Right, yes.
I had my hand up before it was seconded.
Yes, okay.
Before it was proposed.
Yes, okay. Angus.
I'm, I'm not sure it's a good idea. The most progressive large firms in the country these days do not have an HR department. They leave it to the managers because the managers know the people. And if things are working properly, the managers have got it right. If things aren't working properly, the managers get sacked. I think that the way the town council works at the moment is very good. We have an excellent town clerk and I don't think we should have any changes. And, but before I got my comments in, uh, people jumped in and, and made the motion and seconded it.
Yeah. Um, yes, thank, thank you, Angus. Um, I'm not.
May I, can I just comment?
Yes, yes.
Sorry, sorry. As you all know, I run, I run a group of companies with the wife and most companies of my size, which is probably middle-sized businesses, uh, use external HR people simply because they've got expertise and they can advise on the up-to-date legislation and all. And also if there's situations that need impartiality, they're impartial. So, so that's all, that's basically what happens in industry.
Thank you very much, Eric. Yes, Laura.
I just wanted to come back to what Angus was saying. We're not taking anything away from the town clerk. We would expect her to deal with things in the managerial position that she is. But it's when she brings things to us on staffing problems, we've got the working party and that's what it's there for. And that's what we've been using. We're just looking at a way of firming it up in a slightly different way to what it's been, that's all. It's not taking anything away from what, what Jo does or even what Gary does with his workers.
Okay, Councillor Angus again. You, Julie, mate. Councillor Angus, yes.
If I may, I accept that, but we, we have a staffing committee and we have a town council. We're putting in yet another layer. I, I don't see how that's going to improve anything.
If I could just say, if, if we, if we go ahead with the personnel committee, Chairman, the staffing committee won't exist as it does, it won't exist anymore. It will just be the personnel committee.
Councillor June.
A couple of things really. First of all, you don't have a staffing committee. You've never had a staffing committee have work. You have a general purpose working group or a staff working group that do not have powers. Once you appoint a committee, they have powers. Eirnlica states that very clearly. And these, and we've also got to remember that these recommendations are based on what Eirnlica is telling us that we should be doing. Many of the councils that have accrued, that have achieved accreditation, you know, they have to have these, these systems in place. We are falling behind. Yes, I understand what Councillor Angus has said. And back in the day, yes, it worked very, very well. But now, as it, as it stands now with the, the way the law is on employment, we have to be seen to get it absolutely spot on. At the moment, this town council doesn't do appraisals, it doesn't do reviews. These are all requirements of part of our internal audits every year. I'm not sure how we've managed not to have that brought to our attention, but it hasn't been done. And these things need to be changed. And the way to change it is through having a proper personnel committee that has governance, that is under the rules of Eirnlica, which is a body that we prescribe to. It is, it is the way forward. It is how things should be done.
Thank you. And it, right, we'll, we'll come back to the fact that it has been proposed and seconded. That, that this be put to the, that this structure be approved to be chosen at the annual general, at the annual general meeting. So for the moment, we just need approval in principle to this and nothing, not choosing members because they will be.
Sorry, so can I just ask a question? Of all, of all these people here that I'm looking at, who's got HR experience? In what, in what, in what areas, June?
I was, in my working career, I had eight and a half staff over five departments across three floors for a period of 15 years. So obviously HR was very much at the core of what we were doing.
How long ago?
I retired in 17 years ago. So therefore, as I've said in the documents that I've sent to you earlier, I would need to do some retraining. But to be honest, anything to do with HR is ongoing. You should always be training on it.
Councillor Laura.
I used to teach it. That's what my job was. I did leadership and management courses and part of that was teaching personnel. Again, it's two years since I did it and I would, like June, say that I need to keep myself up to date. And I think that's why I feel so strongly about this, because I'm very aware of how it changes.
I was only asking a question because.
Yeah, yeah. No, no, it's fine.
That's to be five people and three people. So, so if there's 13 people, there's eight people that's, or six people that have got no experience of anything that's going to be nominated to do something.
But then you've got.
Apart from myself that runs a mid-sized business that deals with, I don't know how many people, 150 people.
Yeah, but you know, we, you know, Tim has personnel experience. He must have. He runs a business.
Okay.
Steve does. There's a few of us around.
Yeah, no, no, I'm only, I was only asking the question.
But then we sped ourselves, we'd have to spread ourselves out so that we can, you know, spread the expertise.
Right, we need to move this along in principle and let's, following the discussion we've just had, which came in, you know, would somebody propose what they want to do, how we want to proceed? Councillor June.
I propose that we have a personnel committee of five people.
I second that proposal.
And then three for the appeal. Yeah. June.
Well, I was, you need three for, on appeals.
Yeah, yes, that's, yeah. Right, so that's a proposal.
And I second that proposal.
Councillor Cheryl, hello, nice to see you. Thank you very much. That, that's been proposed and seconded. So those in favour of that proposal, please show.
Stephen, where's his hand up? Sorry, Stephen.
One.
Sorry, Stephen.
All right, it was two, seconded.
Yeah, okay. Those in favour of that proposal, then please show.
Can you just keep your hands up for, well, just count one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Yeah, eight, Chairman.
Thank you. Those against? Anybody? Jo, I can't see anybody.
Yes, two, sorry. Yes, two.
That's carried then, thank you. 11, grants policy procedure to receive a recommendation from our general purposes working group.
Yes, Chairman. Again, the, the general purposes working group met and discussed this issue at, I would probably say, great length. And the recommendation from that was that we continue with a £500 budget for what is section 137, which is donations, grants, if you want to call it grants. But the maximum for each grant is set at £100. And any group wanting a grant up to £100 will need to apply in writing.
Thank you. That's the recommendation. Could we have Julie, sorry, June?
You're mute.
I propose that we accept the recommendation.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Right, it's having been proposed and seconded that we accept the proposals of that working group. Those in favour of that, please show.
That's everyone, Chairman.
Thank you. That's unanimous. Thank you. Item 12, accounts for payment March 2021. Jo, is there anybody?
Councillor Barbara has a hand up, Chairman.
Councillor Barbara.
Just, just to say quite clearly, because we've again got British Gas at £338.94 and £21.46. I'm pleased that we've decided that we're going to call someone in to deal with it because I don't think we can afford to keep going on as we are. But I'll move the accounts, but that's bearing in mind that we will be getting money back. And also that we're looking at British Gas and we will be getting credit notes, et cetera, from PHS. So I will move it. Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Someone's a second that proposal. Councillor Tim.
I'll second that.
All right, we've got various people to second. So, so those in favour of that proposal to accept the accounts, please show. Thank you. Jo.
Yep, that's everyone, Chairman.
Thank you. Item 13, Let's Go Hornsey. Tim, is it? Yes.
Nothing to report, Chair.
Thank you. Item 14, Hornsey Area Regeneration Partnership. Councillor Barbara to comment.
Yeah, very short, just to say that again, we were in quarrel because people didn't turn up to the meeting. You know, they didn't put a Zoom on, they didn't come. And therefore we couldn't confirm anything. But we were able to, at the end of the day, agree in principle, but that doesn't get you to be able to do much. So we were in quarrel at the end of the day. So all I can say to you is, I was very disappointed and the, obviously the clerk will be writing to everyone, they'll be getting an email because those people that are on, if they're not going to at least come to a Zoom, then what we need to do is make sure that we get other people on because we're not going to move on otherwise. And I would hate to see HARP not get on with what it's meant to be doing, which is regenerating Hornsey.
Well, that is, that is three meetings running that you've not had quarrel.
Absolutely. It's, it's, it's not good enough. You know, it, it just simply goes on, you know, minutes from the 17th of September were deferred. The same with the January minutes, we could only note them. And of course, the February minutes, again, you just look at it and think, you know, there was insufficient people. Yes, people gave apologies. I have no problem with that and people should be allowed to give apologies. But we seem to be getting so many and it's not like they're having to turn out and come to the town hall. So it, it's very disappointing. However, they are volunteers at the end of the day and it's entirely up to them what they want to do. But I do hope that the next meeting, we've got, you know, a better amount of people.
Thank you, Barbara. And item 15.
Councillor Nicky has a hand up.
Oh, sorry, Councillor Nicky, yes, sorry.
Um, yeah, it's just, if, if, we've got all these people not coming, not turning up. Is it worth a few, I mean, just sending emails that, are there reasons why these people are? Are there people who don't have the technology to do the Zoom? Are the times not convenient? I don't know. Are there, are there reasons why these people aren't coming or aren't able to come to the meetings? Or do they no longer want to be on committee? That surely it, it needs investigating, perhaps on a sort of case-by-case basis. Otherwise, you're going to carry on having these meetings where you're not quarrelled and that just seems, it's just a waste of everybody's time and effort.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with you completely. And what I'm saying to you is that's why the clerk, who is employed by the East Riding to do the job, is actually going to send letters out to those to, you know, just to everybody to say, please, are you still interested in being on? If not, then we'll look for other people.
But why, why have you left it for three meetings?
Well, because we have to do it because that's, that's what we agreed. We, we can't change, chase volunteers up and say, why haven't you come? Because that's not the way we work. We normally have been very fortunate and it's different people who have come to the three meetings.
But there is, there are, there are ways and means of softly, softly contacting people and saying, look, you didn't, you haven't made the past couple of meetings. Is there a problem? Is there something we can help you with? Rather than saying, why haven't you come? You know, try, trying to find out what it is that's preventing them from coming, rather than just, you know, beating them with a big stick.
Yeah, we don't beat anybody with a big stick.
Oh, no.
If you don't want to come, you don't come.
No, yeah, if, if people just don't turn up, then you need to find out what it is, you know, is it just apathy? Have they resigned and they've decided not to bother anymore and they can't be bothered?
I don't think that either. Nobody knows. And, and I mean, after all, our clerk lives here in Hornsey and, and she's a paid clerk by the East Riding and she knows how to do the job. She just.
I'm not saying she doesn't, I'm not saying she doesn't for one, one minute. It's.
She said it's the same all over, but we would like to get on with jobs, you see. That's the thing.
Yeah, oh, no, of course you would.
Councillor June.
Yes, more or less the same as what Nikki was saying because I listened to Councillor Aitken on the 24th of February. And she, as part of the regeneration, I believe, Councillors John and Councillor Barbara can confirm that she has stated that they're actually having a review of the area regeneration partnerships as to whether or not they're still fit for purpose. Now, under these circumstances with people not turning up or not wanting to commit, then I'm going to guess that that's what will end up happening is that HARP will be deemed not fit for purpose.
No, well, you, well, you can assure you, you won't deem anything because anything that I've got with volunteers come, we shall get new volunteers if we don't have these. These are people who have come on because you have to fit into a box, unfortunately. For each of your people, you can't just choose people that you want to come. It's got to be people who have coming with expertise. And therefore it's the same, we've had a re, a review before, we had one three years ago. So we, we know for a fact that we have got staff to look after them and we expect that people will volunteer because they wish to come and give of their time. But I think that Let's Go Hornsey's got the same trouble. I believe the civic society have got the same trouble. I think a, a lot of people have because I think people are a little bit tired at the moment and they don't feel that anything much is happening. Doesn't seem to be a lot of funding available and therefore they don't bother coming, which is a great pity because we do value them.
And can I just, can I just come back in now on the, according to Councillor Aitken, we're awash with money. 1.25 million still left in the highest rate, 300,000 coming to the regeneration and goodness knows how many others that she spoke of. There seems to be a lot of money that's out there that's, that can be used. And as she stated, she wanted initiatives, she wants, and she was asking for the ward councillors to meet, to bring people together. Now, if HARP's not meeting, then they're not fulfilling that. I understand that Bevly and Bridlington have already got themselves sorted in that regard. Can you comment on that?
Well, this isn't really why I'm supposed to comment. At the end of the day, all I'm trying to tell you is what's going on at the Hornsey Air Regeneration Partnership. And that partnership is like many other partnerships, at Drifield, at Withernsea, all over the East Riding. And whether we're awash with money, if you're in quarrel, in quarrel, then you won't be able to spend the money because you've got to be able to do these things properly. You can't just agree something in principle. So therefore you do need to be quarrelled. And all I'm saying at the moment is, we've not been able to confirm all of the minutes because we haven't been quarrelled. But I'm sure we will be. And I look forward to speaking to you after the next meeting and telling you how well we've done and how many people have turned up.
Thank you, okay.
Truly happy that that happens, Councillor Barbara, because I think what needs to happen.
Councillor Cheryl has a hand up, Chairman.
Cheryl.
Yeah, just quickly, can I just point out that if, if HARP, as I presume, is linked to East Riding, so the clerk is also, that there are policies and procedures that have to be adhered to. Hence, if you're not quarrelled, that a certain time or certain people don't attend certain meetings, a certain timeframe has to be passed before somebody can do anything about it.
Absolutely right.
Yeah, so I just said, it's not just, you can willy-nilly whatever. Even though they're volunteers, you have to adhere to a certain standard and they have to miss a certain amount of meetings before the clerk can intervene officially.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item 15, East Riding of Yorkshire Council, items of interest. Barbara will, has got something on this, I believe.
Yes, Barbara has. I am expecting to hear good news shortly regarding the replacement of the postbox on Hull Road. Residents are looking forward to this and I have confirmation that there are no underground pipes or cables in the proposed new location and it will not need a new planning application, even though its position has slightly changed from one side of the road to the other side, which is Mayview Avenue. It's not Hull Road, it's still on the same side. So hopefully by the next meeting, we ought to see a postbox there. Item two is, we've had Covid police presence in Hornsey over the weekend and penalty notices have been given out. As we expected would happen, it is happening. East Riding has no Covid police at the moment. They have looked at what they were going to do and where they were going to have them. And we are looking at them for the future rather than just at the moment because there, there seems to be a little bit of, I think, confusion about who can do what because of the way things are being put forward by the government. However, we'll wait and see. And if we have any Covid police, which we put there by the East Riding, I'd be only too happy to tell you, but at the moment, we haven't. But I do believe the police are doing a jolly good job. Having spoke to Inspector Cocker the other day, he said they are going to Bridlington and to Hornsey and to Withernsea. And they are stopping people and talking to them. So I think that's good news. Item three is, I've got K comma night sauce should be finished in four to six weeks, depending on how they get on within the next month. It could be just one month. As you're aware, they've caused some inconvenience to our residents, but hopefully they will have completed their work and we can get. have completed their work and we can get back to normal. And perhaps some people will get the benefit of the upgrade. They've promised a sweep clean and power wash where necessary as they move along. And an officer from the East Riding of councillor, oh, sorry, council, is monitoring as and when completed. Item four, I agreed with Joanna this morning that I would give a brief update this evening regarding the Le Graham Mop Garden. Some of you will be aware that this is the second time we've been informed that money is available to upgrade this area. However, new people would not know that we were promised money from the Yorkshire cycle race, which of course did not take place due to Covid. So the money was allocated elsewhere in Hornsey, including the central promenade. And it got much maintained, maintenance achieved there. A new coastal community fund has been allocated money from the government to bring people back to the coast and in turn, should help our local businesses to get them back on their feet with the help of the High Street Fund. However, a fund has been put together for the garden, which will be ring fenced. But at this moment in time, I have no actual numbers. I have invited an officer to come to talk to the councillors, so that you will have input into the project, as there are four proposed options to choose from. He will be coming to our next meeting on the twenty sixth of April at seven o'clock, as agreed by our town clerk this morning. And he will be able to tell you all about everything that is being suggested in the four projects for that garden. I'd like to tell you more, but this is all I have for now. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Cheryl, are you wishing to comment?
No, sorry, I forgot to.
Okay. Counselor Julie.
You're on mute, Julie.
Sorry, sorry. I just wondered if I could ask Counselor Barbara, she kindly updated us about the flooded path at Brockham Benns. If there's any further news on that, or if it might help, because it is still flooded, if it might help if the council wrote two highways to reinforce Barbara's efforts, maybe?
Well, sorry, the trouble is that quite clearly, as you're well aware, where, where the flooding is, is because it's coming off the fields. And highways have had a good look at it. They've had officers there to inspect the area. They've cleaned out the drains. And unfortunately, the water will find its way to the Meere. However, our officer, as you notice, I don't use officers' names, because I don't believe that they should be put into any kind of conversation. Simply to say that it has been monitored duly. And they're not sure what they're going to be able to do. Because if you look at it, the fields are much higher. If you're going from Hornsey on the right hand side, than going towards the Meere. And the water doesn't necessarily go underground or find its way other than across that road. But we're looking to see what they can do.
Yeah, I think it, I think it's certainly going to be quite a dangerous situation. As Barbara said, the path is, is way lower than the road and way lower than the field. But the experts at highways really need to focus on it. Because I was driving into town the other day, and somebody had stepped out into the road to, to get round the flooding. And it's an area where cars are coming around the corner blind. And there could be a nasty accident. So I don't think it's going to be a simple fix, as Barbara said. But I think they really need to focus on it, because it's definitely hazardous. And of course, there are some children that still have to walk to school that way. You know, they don't get bus passes, do they, at Seaton?
Only half a seat.
Yeah, not the far end, the close bit, don't get it. So I, I really think we need to keep it on highways radar, which I'm sure Barbara is doing. But just wondered if we'd had any updates.
They are, but unfortunately, they've been out at Snaes and Howden, et cetera, you know. I mean, we haven't got a huge amount of men, you know, that actually dig us with the drains, et cetera. And they've been working, obviously, out where Howden is, where people have got quite a bit of flooding. But I do know that a certain officer does travel up and down that road, as did, I can't say his name now, Mike Peak, who has retired. He used to be up and down, up and down, up and down. But no, it's, it's, it's always been there. We've always known about it. But nobody seems to know how to do something about it. Because the actual dykes don't take the water anywhere, because they fill up and then they just go across the road. And it really is very dangerous.
It is. Well, thank you for your efforts, Barbara.
I shall, I'm keeping on to it, Julie, I promise.
Thank you.
Counselor June.
Yeah, my question's in relation to Southgate Cross. Have we got any updates on that?
Only that the fenestration's been reordered.
No time scale?
No time scale. There is no such thing as a time scale at the moment.
Well, what worries me is that the last one took over a year. We're not going to be wasting a year again, are we?
I've no idea. You see, with Covid, there's certain people who are manufacturing things. There's certain people who cannot get the parts they want to do that manufacturing. So everybody blames the other person further down the road. That's what happens. And that's why our officers have to wait till they have it before they can put it there. But they do know it needs to be done. And they are told frequently by our support office.
Okay, thank you. Public participation. Have we got anybody? Joe, I can't see.
Yep, we, we have, I've been notified of a couple of questions from Neris Johnson, Chairman.
Thank you. Neris?
Got you muted, Neris?
Yeah, I was pressing the wrong buttons. I was trying on my screen bit and it's at the bottom. So apologies. Part of it's been dealt with. Coincidentally, I've been watching the East Riding meeting because of my involvement with the regeneration project. And I'm very impressed with what the ward councillors are going through with four hour meetings. And they're very, very intense. So bravo. What I was looking at is two questions, but I'm leaving one of them because it's already been dealt with by Counselor Barbara. And I hope Joe passed them on to you. And you can have them afterwards, if you haven't got them already. But I noticed one of the things that Counsel Aiken said was that she wished to have meetings on the High Street with the ward councillors and stakeholders. And I have been talking with the Reventine and others about the third sector being involved because of what we can do in the town. So what I wanted to ask is, when it's diarised with the ward councillors, could you look at the third section of the businesses and as to how we might be involved in this? Because my understanding was that Counsel Aiken wanted to meet a wide range of stakeholders. So the question is, if you would consider us? Yes.
Thank you. This technically isn't, isn't regarding the town council, but Barbara, have you?
Yes, I would simply say to Neris, of course we will. Victoria is a very good portfolio holder. She has rung me on many occasions now. We're very good friends. And she would love to meet us over here. But of course, you see, at the moment, all our ward councillors are told, we cannot meet with people. We can't go to site visits. We're not, and that's with planning. We cannot go to site visits. We are not allowed. So we couldn't hold a meeting anywhere, anywhere, you know? Because if, if she comes over here, because obviously she lives in Howden, she would have to come over here and meet with John and I. We've immediately gone over the amount at the moment. You can't do it. So we're waiting till we are allowed to meet. When that happens, we're going to invite her over here. And we will definitely make sure that you are invited, because we will tell the town council and we'll make sure that everybody that wants to be there can be there. You have my promise.
Thank you. It does involve the town council, because the town council have invited to have reps. The other one that I want to say was, when you were talking about returning to the face to face meetings, and I think, I don't know, was it Counselor Andrew mentioned, might be limited to fifteen? Or somebody mentioned. As a business, it might be more as before, but you might be correct. But if it is the fifteen, could you look at live streaming recording? I know it won't be the same as Zoom. But we do appreciate, because a lot of the hip members and other people are actually catching up afterwards. They might not be here physically, but we do actually discuss on and off. The town clerk is actually on the hip, so she can see stuff. But quite a few things are done by messenger. So what I would like you to consider is the increased inclusion of the public in the meetings. And when it's face to face, even if everybody was allowed in, it's still helpful to have it recorded in some way. And that could just be by one camera recording the meeting. But I would like you to consider it, because a lot of people have appreciated the being included.
Yes, thank you. Counselor, Counselor Nikki, have you got your hand up yet?
I have, yes. I'm sorry, I, I meant to put it up before. And it's, somehow I managed to lower it instead of raise it. I wanted to just comment on some of the, the work that's been done in the town for the telephone systems. I have, my, my concern is that I was approached by the primary school and also other community members independently to say that the workmen are actually using quite unpleasant language. Now, a lot of this happened outside the primary school, which is not good. And obviously, this was reported back. I believe the school contacted the, the, the operations manager. And the second thing that they managed to do was they dug up the, the crossing outside the primary school. Again, I appreciate they have to do that. But what they didn't do was put in a temporary crossing until it was pointed out to them by the school that they hadn't done that. And it was, it was actually quite dangerous, apparently, because there, there were parents and children trying to cross the road and cars who were behaving really very, in a very inconsiderate manner and failing to stop for the children, all the parents. It could have been a very serious situation. So I think these people need monitoring.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anybody else, Joe?
Not that I'm aware of, no, Chairman, no.
Thank you. So we now go into camera for a brief discussion, item sixteen, staffing matters. So we thank the members of the public and other people who are there. We wish you well. Keep safe, keep healthy. Thank you. So is, is that now just us, Joe?
If you can just give me a second to get us off YouTube, that would be great.